Well, Michael Cathcart, thank you for joining me on the Tea with Amanda Rowley. You're running for Spokane County District 2. Big deal, so excited to have you here and help folks get to know you a little better.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for having me. This is a great opportunity.
Yeah, so first big question, what kind of tea are you drinking? What did you decide?
I had to pick the Earl Grey Old Fashioned.
I love that. Now, there's no alcohol in it, so we're not getting boozy here, but it has the flavors. So, have you had a sip already?
Yes, it's fantastic.
That's great.
For those who haven't had it, they gotta try it.
It's really nice, and the fancy glass and everything. I am sipping on some iced mango iced tea, so good stuff here. We're all energized and caffeinated and ready for questions, right?
Exactly.
Well, let's get to the heart of it. First of all, why did you decide to run for, well, one of two new Spokane County Commissioned Districts?
Yeah, you know, it really wasn't on my to-do list until the redistricting came about and realized that I was in this brand-new district that encompassed most of my city council district, as well as a significant portion of East Spokane, and started looking at it and realizing that, you know, the way the legislature passed the law around us moving from three commissioners to five was, they did it in a way that I don't think is going to be conducive to the best policymaking, and I think that we run the risk of some portions of our county, my district being one of those areas, that may get neglected as a result of this decision. So, what people may not understand is that when we go to five, we're gonna go to five with five different districts. There's nobody at large who's there to think about the entire county, and so if you compare it to the city of Spokane, just as a close example, we have a council president who's elected at large and a mayor elected at large who can veto. And so, you've got two different checks on decision-making that may not be in the best interest of the entire city. We're not gonna have that at the county, and I'm very concerned about the district I represent now at the city, as well as all of East Spokane being fairly represented at the county level. And so, I really felt compelled to jump in this and try to win the seat because I feel like I've been just an ardent, you know, advocate for the people I represent, and I wanna take that same level of advocacy to the county and make sure that they are well-represented there. You know, I don't shy away from anything. I'm not afraid to push back against the status quo, and even if it's folks in my party or friends of mine, I'm gonna push back as hard as I can and make sure that my constituents are as represented as they can be.
Yeah, and you currently sit on the Spokane City Council, and you haven't finished this term yet, and you're looking at moving on to the county side of things. Kinda tell me about that. How do you think serving on city council maybe will benefit you as a county commissioner?
Yeah, well, you know, I love serving on the city council. I do. I certainly have my frustrations, and I have, you know, things that I would very much like to see us do differently, both for just good governance reasons, as well as just good policy. But really, for me, it came down to this idea of making sure that folks in East Spokane are represented, and that's why I decided to run. But I think what I've learned from my time on the city council and really, I think, gained a very healthy respect for is, you know, the role and the rights of those who are in the minority in the body. You know, having been somebody and currently is somebody who is in the minority generally on the Spokane City Council, I've really seen how certain things like the Open Public Meetings Act, which is really there to provide more transparency and to push for more transparency, can actually create a situation where certain members of a governing body or certain folks who have certain positions or represent certain districts can be excluded from conversations and excluded from participating in...
When there's a lack of transparency.
When there's a lack of that, yeah. And so, I've really come to understand that, and I want to make sure that at the county level, I believe if I win, I'll be in the majority, and I'll be able to do a lot of really good things for the people I represent. But I also wanna make sure that we have a healthy respect for the folks who are there in the minority and to make sure that their ideas and their input is adequately provided for, because it frankly makes all of us better representatives, better commissioners, council members, whatever it might be, and we wanna make sure that all, you know, perspectives are represented. Doesn't mean that the ultimate outcome will be what they want, but it does make, I think, a lot of sense to ensure that their constituents have a seat at the table. And so, that's something that I really wanna make sure that we are thinking about under this new makeup at the county.
Now, born and raised in Spokane?
I was born in the Spokane Valley.
In Spokane Valley, yes.
Yep.
Now, tell me a little bit about, so you're running for District 2. How long have you lived in that district, in that area of our county?
Yeah.
And it's a new district, right?
It is, it is. So, I've lived in the city since 2007, I believe it is, and I've lived in the District 2 since 2017, but prior to that, I was literally probably 500 feet from the boundary of the district where I lived prior. So, I mean, really, you know, we're talking about a relatively small but dense area relative to the rest of the county that we'll have the privilege of representing if we win. And yeah, I've really enjoyed, you know, living in the city, and obviously, we have some things we need to do better there, but yeah, living in the city has been just a great privilege for me.
And let's talk about that. So, District 2 covers east of, the eastern portion of Spokane.
Yeah.
What are some issues that District 2 is facing right now?
Crime. Crime is a big one. I can't go a day without hearing, you know, strong concerns around crime and some of the vacancy issues that folks are dealing with, both, you know, residents and business owners. It's just, people feel inundated, and they don't feel like there's a big response, and...
Response from law enforcement?
Response from law enforcement, response from their city or county leaders. I think people just feel like, a lot of folks are just accepting the status quo and aren't pushing back against it. You know, I have the privilege right now of chairing our Public Safety Committee at the city, and I've really tried to make an emphasis on supporting our law enforcement, supporting good public policies that are gonna keep us safe, and I think that there are some opportunities that really we can only take advantage of by collaborating with other jurisdictions around us, and that's not really happening right now, not to the level that it should be. So, I think some of the things that we really should be looking at are, you know, better asset sharing. So, a great example, Fairchild and the Sheriff's Office at the county just went in together on this small arms training facility out in the West Plains, but the city is not a part of that. And that should have been, you know, one of the very first conversations and agreements was, you know, all of us going in together on that because it is a great facility and...
For more of a regional benefit.
A regional benefit, exactly. And so, there's opportunities like that that we need to think about. I also think intelligence sharing. When I talked to Jim McDevitt, who, you know, has previously served as our Eastern District Attorney, but also for a time was the Director of the Police Force here as a civilian, and he said that, he shared with me that how frustrating and frankly eye-opening it was to see how little intelligence was shared at that time between agencies.
And which agencies? Are we talking city to county?
Sheriff's Office, the city police, you know, it could be Airway Heights, you know, all the different jurisdictions that have their own police force.
Is it intentional?
No, it's just, it's just one of those things that hasn't been improved upon like it should, and as I've talked to John Knowles, who's a candidate for sheriff, you know, he's also commented that that will be an emphasis, is to try and improve that intelligence sharing because, you know, especially as we're dealing with gang activity and the drive-by shootings, a big portion of those are happening in Commissioner District 2 or Council District 1, and, but they're not just there, they're also happening in the valley and other areas of our community. And so, and the gang members, you know, they don't just simply say, "Well, there's the city line or there's the county line, we're gonna stop our activity here." No, they crisscross, it's all over the place. And so, that intelligence sharing, I think, really is important in getting a handle on a lot of that activity that's going on. And then, I also really wanna explore two other things. One, I have been pushing for big time at the city level, and we're getting closer, I think, to piloting this, and that's kind of a form of neighborhood policing. And so, we do have areas of the county that are far more urban in nature and would benefit strongly by having neighborhood policing. So, having officers that are out dedicated to kinda being on that beat in their neighborhoods, on foot, on bike, talking to folks, you know, creating just a real positive atmosphere around those neighborhoods, but also the interactions and relationships with the community and the law enforcement officers who serve them. And that's something we don't have a lot of right now. You know, we have a lot of kids who, unfortunately, the only time they come in contact with law enforcement is if there's a call to service for something bad that's happening, right? Doesn't necessarily mean it's bad to them, but it's something bad is happening. And so, really finding opportunities to connect kids with our officers in a positive setting and having them out in the neighborhoods, I think is a great way to do that, to not only keep the neighborhood safe, but also to have that positive relationship.
Have you collaborated on this with candidate John Knowles for sheriff?
Oh, yeah, we've talked about it, yeah.
You echo some of the things that he proposed in our interview with him.
Yep, no, we have talked at length about a number of these things because we're really excited to work on them and see the city and the county and other jurisdictions work together better. And, you know, and another one that is maybe slightly more out of the box, but I think we should explore it, and that is joint patrols. You know, we should look at, how can we better work together to patrol especially the fringes of the city, the fringes of the county around where, you know, the other municipalities are, and see, can we have better agreements on how we're going to patrol those areas, you know, working together with those agencies? And so, it's not quite a metro police, but it's kind of in that direction of, you know, a more collaborative, cooperative, I think, direction on law enforcement. So, back to your original question, crime is a big one, homelessness, obviously, with all of the visible stuff that's going on related to that. And then, you know, after that, the biggest issue that I hear is taxes. People are absolutely fed up with the rate of property taxes in particular and how high those are, and so, I think one of the things we have to do is, we need to commit to go into the legislature and ensuring that we're gonna work to fix or reform the senior exemption as one, and possibly other aspects of how we do property taxes in the state because it really is putting a lot of folks in this current environment of high inflation and high prices and rising gas and all that, it's putting people in a real tough spot.
So, you wanna lighten that burden?
Well, we need to lighten it. We gotta look at that and see, is there a smarter, better way that we can approach this? And I think there's a lot of different directions you could take. The legislature is who would make those decisions, not us at the county or the city, but we can go and advocate. We do on all kinds of other issues, and I think this is one that we need to make an emphasis on because there are just a lot of, especially seniors who are, they're barely making it, but, and yet, they are still just over the number where they can receive that exemption because of their social security and other payments that they get. And they're, you know, and as their property taxes go up, they're on a fixed income and they can't rise with it. And so, at some point, we start to see people losing their houses, and then that will really create a cliff with regard to homelessness, and we do not wanna get there.
I do wanna take a step back when talking about crime. Spokane County, I've done interviews with you even on the city level of just the increase in drive-by shootings that we're seeing. So, how would you wanna address this on the county level? I mean, I kinda touched on this, but are there other steps that you would wanna take?
Well, here's another thing that, again, the county and city doesn't have control over, but I would be emphatic, and I am emphatic about it, and would like to see our school districts work more on this, and that's bringing back the resource officers into the District 81 schools. I believe, I strongly believe that there is a connection between the rising crime and shootings in particular. You'll talk to our officers, I'll tell you, a lot of these are being committed by younger people, and I think what's happening is, you know, we had a time where we had resource officers in our schools, and their role, one of their roles, was identifying kids who were starting down that wrong path, and they could intervene, they could, you know, try to do things to get them out of that, those activities or that lifestyle, talk to the parents, whatever it might take. And now, we really just don't have that anymore, and so, I feel like we are losing a lot of our kids as a result, and it certainly concerns, you know, as a fairly new parent, you know, our child's 16, about almost 16 months, but it's something that really concerns me, and I would like to see resource officers back in those schools, and certainly, I would be, as a commissioner, very willing to commit some level of resources to putting, even if it's sheriff's deputies filling that role and not necessarily, you know, or working with the city on, you know, splitting between sheriff's deputies and SPD, but it is absolutely critical that we have those officers in place because they, I believe, can be at the front lines in really preventing a lot of what we're seeing. And then, the others, it goes back to the intelligence sharing, more officers on the streets. You know, we're working on a plan right now to try and hire another 60 officers at the city. We are woefully deficient in terms of our numbers, and I believe that we need to do something very similar at the county. They added 20 officers last year, and, you know, the sheriff and his team have been working really hard to fill those vacancies and get those folks hired up.
It almost sounds like the city's made really competitive benefits available for these new positions. Even our potentially new sheriffs, they're like, "Man, we need to be just as competitive 'cause the city..." You guys are doing something right, apparently, 'cause...
Well, we saw, you know, the county last year, they added an incentive pay to new hires, and so, I fought like hell last year to do the same thing in our budget, and we allocated $250,000 towards incentive pay specifically because we need to hire, get more officers hired. We also did a Hire Ahead program to get 10 more officers at the city, but it's just deficient. And so, when I did a ride-along with the sheriff's deputy here about three or four months ago, you know, he really pointed out to me how much territory they have to cover and with how few bodies that they have. And so, the night that I went out, it was a late night, we had, I think, 10 officers countywide covering, you know, this vast territory. We had to travel several miles to respond to an urgent call, and so, we had to go at pretty darn high speeds to get there in a timely manner because there's just not the personnel to deal with.
You need more bodies out there.
Exactly. And so, we need a lot more than 10 officers countywide, and so, I really wanna do something very similar at the county. I think the city and the county both have to up the number of officers that they have to better meet sort of national standards, but really, just to meet our critical need here in terms of rising crime and those issues.
And sticking with that, kinda touched on this, so we have up for election a new Spokane County Sheriff, so we have John Knowles and Wade Nelson running. How do you, how do you see yourself working with the Sheriff's Office if you were to become county commissioner?
Well, I'll be clear, I mean, I've endorsed John Knowles, and he's endorsed me and my race, but I, you know, I really like Wade, I think he's got a lot of really good ideas. I would work closely with whomever is our next sheriff to make sure that we're keeping our entire community safe. And again, I will be pushing as hard as I can as a commissioner to push for more of that collaborative and cooperative approaches with other jurisdictions because it's not just smart and good policing and good governance, but it's also potentially a cost savings to the taxpayers if we can really get more efficient. So, I would be pushing really hard on that, and I think that there's just a lot of missed opportunities, and so, you know, I think a new, fresh sheriff is gonna be able to bring some just different perspectives and some different ideas, and hopefully, we can work together. But, you know, the great thing is, from my view, you know, we set the budgets for the Sheriff's Office and those, and so, we've got...
Can we expect a lot of funding going that route?
Well, as we have funding that's available, that is certainly one of the high priorities because, again, we've gotta get those more officers hired, we've gotta get smarter on how we police, and so, I would absolutely be committed to ensuring that for sure that we're, that we will never defund any, anything in the Sheriff's Office as long as I'm there, but more specifically, and hopefully, we'll be able to actually invest to hire many, many more officers to keep the community safe.
Started to touch on this, homelessness.
Yeah.
Hot, hot topic in our community, and we're seeing a lot of developments unfold with just the homeless camp off I-90 just this past week, not to timestamp it, but I wonder, do you think the county, and you kinda come from a special perspective, sitting on council right now?
And it's in my district.
Yes. Do you think the county has engaged enough to find solutions to the homeless crisis in general?
Well, I, I mean, there's always more you can do, right? Always more you can do, and I would say that about the city and the county, but ultimately, and we're talking very specifically in this about that East Central Camp, and I'll talk broadly about homelessness in a second, but specifically with the camp, it's really a state issue. The state owns the land, and they have from day one told the city, "We are not allowed to do anything to remove the folks who are camping there." And as a result, we have seen rapes, we have seen sexual assaults, we have seen violence, we have seen attempted kidnappings, and a whole lot more that has gone completely unreported. And so, when that is happening, there is an obligation to not just the community around that is experiencing a huge uptick in crime, at least 58% by the last numbers we have, and those are about two months old, but also to protect the people who are actually in that camp being victimized every single day, and that's not happening. So, that needs to change, in my opinion. I have asked the mayor, I have, you know, talked to Sheriff Ozzy, I have talked to candidate Knowles, I've talked to Chief Midle, I've talked to, you know, a number of folks on the law enforcement side to see what we can do because it's just not right what the people in that camp, those who are being victimized, as well as the neighborhoods around them. And some of those, you know, businesses now are losing their insurance, and they're potentially gonna go out of business as a result of this because they are...
They're losing their minds if I...
You're 100% right, and, but now, they can't even report any crimes that are happening because their insurance will be gone if they do that.
Really?
Yeah. And so, that's a huge concern of mine. It's not fair to them at all, and what has not yet been reported, that I've seen anyway, is that WashDot has now decided they are gonna make the camp permanent, and so, I will be fighting back against that.
Who said that?
The, um, Gribner confirmed to our city administrator that that is the plan, that they will, they will put pallet shelters on that site. In fact, they will expand it to at least one more lot, maybe two more in that area, and I just think that that is gonna be a nightmare for that community and that neighborhood, and I'm not gonna stand for it, that's for sure.
I mean, it's in your district, yeah.
It's right in my district. And once again, these things are happening without any conversation with the council members who actually represent that district.
Is it because the key players, our local leaders, aren't coming to the table to have these discussions?
Oh, I have screamed I would come to the table. In fact, I presented a letter to Commerce basically asking, "Just, let's have a, let's have a table that we can all sit at and talk," because, you know, a lot of these decisions are being made in Olympia, or they're being made by third parties who don't necessarily have, you know, the certain interests in mind, and we need to have a holistic conversation that includes the region, that includes every jurisdiction, from the valley to Airway Heights to unincorporated county and the city, because this is not a, and that back to homelessness as a broader issue, this isn't a city issue, as a lot of folks say, this is a regional issue, and if you really...
And where does, where have you seen the county play in all of this? Does it need to take more...
Yes, 100%. And so, the county has typically taken the position that they will pass through money and, you know, dollars that we get from the Fed and certain grants, they will pass through to the pot. I believe they do participate on the COC, Continuum of Care, but, but really, they need to take a bigger role because I believe two things need to happen. One, there's gonna have to be a conversation around sheltering in the unincorporated areas, but there also needs to be a broader conversation around what is the role of the various jurisdictions. And I think the entity best situated to convene that conversation is the county. And so, what I've said is...
As maybe a mediation or...
Well, you could call it that, but I think, but they should also be participating in it.
Sure, okay.
So, not just mediating, but participating.
Yeah, okay.
But I think they're the entity that can best sort of bring every jurisdiction to that, to that broader table to talk about, you know, "Well, what can you do? What are you willing to do? Oh, you know, you can't do this, but maybe you can."
Sure.
And I don't see those conversations taking place, certainly not in a public way. And I don't think the public believes for a second that we are as robustly and urgently discussing these matters like we should be. And so, what I've said is, day one, let's call a meeting, a public meeting, that would include, you know, certainly the city, the valley, the county, but I would also potentially invite Airway Heights, Liberty Lake, and any others that would like to come and be a part of that conversation because, again, this is a regional issue. Everybody is struggling with the issue of homelessness to some extent, but what ends up, what ends up happening is, the resources to try and help and get those who are experiencing homelessness back on their feet get put solely in the city of Spokane. And so, as a result, it makes the impacts on the city so much more, even though many of these folks who are utilizing these resources might come from the valley, they might come from Mead, they might come from Liberty Lake, or frankly, Missoula, or Billings, or, you know, anywhere else. And we know for a fact the camp in East Central has incentivized folks from across the country to come here, particularly those with outstanding warrants trying to, you know, flee from whatever they're dealing with, and so...
Now, where have you heard that? 'Cause I've...
Our city administrator.
Really?
Yes.
And are we confirming this somehow? I mean...
I believe it has been confirmed by law enforcement.
Really?
That, yeah, and so, it's happened.
Kinda words got now.
The word has gotten out. Exactly right. And so, and that's just not, that's not what we want at all for our community, and so, you know, we're a very compassionate community, but certainly, I don't think anybody signed up to be the country's caretaker, and certainly not the region's caretaker. I believe we should be taking care of the folks who are here the best we can, and the county needs to play that larger role of bringing the entire region together to finally come up with a, to the best you can with homelessness, a solution that's gonna work for everybody. And I don't think that we've had those conversations. It all, it all comes back to talking, and oftentimes, we silo ourselves and we don't talk, and I just think that's something we have to get past.
So, is it, are you saying that you would be maybe that voice to help the county be more engaged and facilitate those conversations?
Absolutely. And I've talked, you know, I've, for example, you know, council member Brandy Peet's out in the valley, I've talked to her about this, and, you know, she's very interested in having these broader conversations. And so, we know that there's interest, it's just a matter of, is there a group or an entity who's willing to pull all those voices together and start coordinating on how, what our response is gonna be? And it should not be limited, by the way, to homelessness. I mean, I think broader than homelessness, we've got housing issues that we need to talk about. The city is taking some pretty bold steps to address our significant deficit in housing, and we need other jurisdictions to be a part of that conversation to see what they're willing to do, especially as we lead up to the, to the big conversation around expanding the urban growth boundary to accommodate for more green space that can be developed.
Yeah, I wanna dial into that. We're seeing a huge growth in the inland northwest, we're seeing some of those growing pains already, so what, what steps, I mean, are there multiple steps that you would wanna take as county commissioner to address that, address those pains now and the pains that we could be feeling as, as population continues to grow?
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly we need to have these broad conversations around, you know, how we're, how we are going to accommodate growth, and that includes, you know, our roads, the infrastructure to handle it, you know, there's a lot more than just simply the home that gets built. There's, you know, water, sewer, the roadways, what's the capacity, can they handle the traffic? And so, all those things have to get figured out, but where I think there's also an opportunity is, again, if we're going to have these big conversations around who can do what, we can also talk about, you know, is there, is there opportunity for us to jointly talk about funding as well? And so, can we work together on funding infrastructure, even if it means housing might go in another jurisdiction, but perhaps there's an opportunity there for revenue sharing on the backend? And so, can we talk about, you know, as a, as a county, working together regionally to say, "Well, we can put housing here, we can put housing here, it just needs infrastructure, so regionally, how can we help participate in funding that infrastructure to accommodate it?" Because ultimately, if we don't accommodate the housing in Spokane County, we will lose a title, and that is what's happening. We have seen a massive uptick in traffic on, on the freeway as a result of people being pushed, frankly, from our policies on growth into Idaho, and that does not create a good situation for anybody because now, we have more infrastructure issues that we have to deal with and less tax money to actually pay for it because their taxes are going elsewhere.
Going to Idaho, yeah.
And so, that is not something that we wanna see happening, but the difference in how easy it is to build and develop is night and day, you know, often between the two sides of the, of the state line.
Definitely. Well, have some of your tea and enjoy some of that. Kinda wanna go back into talking about the new districts that we have forming here in Spokane County. So, this is a historic race. We've gone now from three commissioned districts now to five, and you're one, you're running a race in one of the two new districts covering that east side of Spokane. Can you kinda talk about, well, let's see, the primary election results showed reliably in District 1 and 2 favored the Democratic Party, so I wonder, does this pose a challenge for you going into the general election?
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly from, from day one, we, you know, we always knew that this was a district that was probably a toss-up, if not a slightly lean Democrat district, and the primary had a very strong Democrat turnout, there's no doubt about that. But I think the general election is gonna be a very different election, in part because it's a national election, right? We have races across the country.
More voters, yeah.
More voters, more, you know, the mindset is different in the general than the primary, so I don't know that you can compare exactly the primary and the general, but, you know, my game plan hasn't changed. It's, it's been from day one, I'm gonna go have a conversation with every voter I possibly can and try to talk to them and hear what their concerns are and make sure they know that if I'm elected, I will be, you know, as strong of an advocate for them as I can be. And so, that's been my goal from, from day one in this race, and I'm continuing to kinda eat away at that just every single day, talking to more voters.
And how do you see having these two additional districts, how do you see that benefiting the community that you may soon represent? the community that, that you may soon represent?
Yeah, well, I think it's a great benefit. I have long supported moving to five commissioners, I think that makes a ton of sense. Again, I would have done it in a very different way. I think four districts and one at large would have made so much more sense for the entire region. But we're in the situation that we're in, and, and I think, you know, having these two very city-centric districts will give the city a much stronger voice in, in county discussions, which I think is really good, especially for, you know, many of the constituents that I represent today on the city council, who for years and years have been underrepresented and inadequately supported, frankly, by the city and, and the county. And I think that there's opportunities to improve that on both ends. You know, and so I'm really grateful to have Councilman Bingle on the city council, who's also just an ardent advocate for the folks that we represent. And so I know that we're going to have really strong representation for those folks, both on the city and the county if, if I'm elected this November.
One of your, we kind of touched on this early on, one of your key issues for your platform is accessibility, transparency and accessibility to county government. Can you, can you kind of spell it out for me? Why, why is that important?
Well...
Or to you? I mean, it is important, let me just say, transparency is important, but...
Yes, I would hope for the news, it's very important.
Yes, very important.
The, you know, look, the very, the number one duty of government, I believe, is public safety. But the, the most important thing that government needs to do, I believe, every day is to be transparent and accessible. And if they're not those things, then what ends up happening is, bad policies get passed, bad ideas get put into law, the wrong investments get made, and it's just, and it's hard for people, people feel disconnected, they don't feel like their views matter, participation drops off. There's a whole lot of negative things that we don't want to see happen. But we really want to make sure that the public knows how they can communicate with their county commissioners, where they can, where are the meetings, where are the agendas, how do I know what's on the agenda? How do I know how my commissioners voted? There is no easy way to really see that, short of, you know, doing a more detailed public records request, digging into the minutes, that sort of thing. And so, you know, we need to really simplify that, and I would start with making every meeting, whether it's a committee meeting, a subcommittee, or a full body of the county, needs to be public, it needs to be filmed, it needs to be streamed live and archived for folks to go back and watch, exactly how we do it at the city. And, you know, up until COVID, the city didn't do that with our committees or anything. And that was a big emphasis of mine coming into the city council, and so one of the few sort of good outcomes of COVID was that we now film and archive all of our committees. And that is great for everybody to know what we're talking about. That's where we really did, you know, go deep into policy and talk about ideas that were, that are coming forward. And so there's so much more information that you get from our committees than you get from perhaps a regular city council meeting.
Because you can go more in-depth and discuss it, yeah, definitely.
Exactly. And we have our staff people there to give us, you know, reports and all of that. So I want to do the same thing at the county, make sure that the county is as accessible as it possibly can be and transparent. Everybody should know, you know, what we're voting on, when we're voting on it, and how their commissioners voted on that, and it should be front and center on the commissioner's website. The second thing I would do, and I've been really excited to have championed this at the city, and I'm grateful to, I would be grateful to bring it to the county if I'm elected, and that is language access. You know, my council district is the most diverse of the three council districts, and this commissioner district will be the most diverse of the five commissioner districts. And I want to make sure that every single one of my constituents that I represent, whether at the city or county, has access to their city or county government to inform themselves of what's going on, educate themselves of our codes and, and what we're working on, and, and how they can better participate. And not necessarily at the commissioner level, but even interdepartmentally, right? Just different things you might be doing out in the community might require you to interact with various departments of the county. And I want to make sure that regardless of, you know, how proficient you are at English, that you can have those conversations. I think about my wife, who is Vietnamese, and, you know, when she was younger, she was the one going into permitting on her parents' behalf. And, you know, as a 16-year-old, 15-year-old, you know, she's the one going in there on their behalf to pull permits and do all of that, because her parents didn't speak very good English. And so as a result, you know, you know, she had to go do that. And so I just want to make sure that every constituent that I represent has that fair access to what's going on, and there's all kinds of ways we can do it through technology and other things. But to me, it's, it's really important. You know, you can't feel well represented if you can't even communicate with the people who are representing you. And so regardless of your language barriers, we should make sure that you can connect to your government officials.
Kind of talk to me about your experience so far as, as Spokane City Council member. What is something you've worked really hard on in this position that you're most proud of? And how, how is it benefiting the community today?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things I would just throw out there that I think is, I'm proud of. One, and I was able to do this my first month on the city council, and I was really grateful for that, it just, the opportunity sort of presented itself. And that is that we made scraps a no-kill shelter. Now, up until that time, it had generally operated that way, but not with any sort of mandate or restriction on that. And so we actually put it in their contract that you'll operate as a no-kill shelter. And I've heard nothing but, you know, positive feedback from the community on that, and so, and really that was just an opportunity, their contract was up for us to discuss, and there was pretty unanimous agreement to do that. So I was really proud about that. But in terms of big policy, big ideas, big things, probably the biggest thing to put out there is Boca, the Building Opportunities and Choices Act that we approved. And so, you know, really what instigated that is, I have been a broken record on housing since day one on the city council. And, you know, I get it, I understand it, and I, and I realize that without more housing, more homeownership opportunities, you know, it's going to be really tough for our community to see a big improvement in median household income and poverty rates and all of that, because one of the greatest wealth builders, you know, is equity in a, in a home, in property that you own. And so I have just been a emphatic, you know, advocate for allowing more housing to get built. And so last year during our housing action plan conversations, I put forward an idea that we should allow up to four units attached, you know, as an enhancement anywhere in the city. And so that kind of sat for a year, and finally was able to get our planning staff to start working on that, that concept, and they just ran with it. And they, they came up with, you know, what I believe is a great plan, it was, it was in the end unanimous by city council, the mayor has been a big advocate for it, I mean, this is pretty universally, you know, loved. And really, the community, from what I have seen, has generally embraced it. Now, we haven't...
Because the need is there.
The need is there.
We need the housing.
The estimates are that we're about 25,000 units regionally underbuilt, right? 25,000 units. And, and that's in part why we are seeing the skyrocketing rents, the skyrocketing housing prices, is, you know, it's a supply and demand issue. And when the demand is here and your supply is here, there's just, there's just no way that you can keep the prices where they need to be, you know, markets will adjust. And so the greatest thing that we can do to help tenants and people who are struggling in our community is to get more housing built. And the great thing is that we can do, I believe, housing of all different types and all different areas, there's a role for every jurisdiction to play in this. And, you know, for people who want to live on larger lots, or who want to live in a very urban downtown setting, I believe we can offer all kinds of options like that and still get the housing built that we need. And so that to me is, is something I'm, I'm really proud of that we've been able to accomplish.
Well, Michael, spill the tea for me, if you will. How are you going to stand out against your opponent, Amber Waldorf, going forward?
Well, I think I already stand out. I mean, I think I have been a loud and vocal advocate for the people I represent. I hear all the time from folks who, you know, appreciate, you know, how I address issues and try to not just say no to things that don't make any sense, but to provide an alternative. A great example was the, the water ban that was presented by council a couple of months ago, that would, you know, restrict your watering. And I said, you know, I get it, we've got some issues, maybe we need to be cautious here, so what is the way we can, we can actually reduce water use in a way that not just, not just, you know, with a stick, but with a carrot, a carrot approach? And so I put out an alternative that said, hey, let's reduce year-over-year usage, or let's put an incentive out there that says, if you reduce your usage year-over-year, you'll get a significant benefit, you know, on your bill. And so I just think it makes sense to put out proactive, positive alternatives. I try to provide amendments to things that maybe aren't quite sufficient or where I think they should be. And obviously, it's up to the will of the council majority to take those and consider